Yeah, my name is Eric Mays. I am the first ward city council person elected here in the City of Flint. For thirty or forty years, I've not seen that's a right this politically in these council chambers. I've been in these council chambers listening to Chester Seven, Woody after eight, Melvin McCree, Woodrow Stanley, and the likes. I'm gonna be frank with you. I'm gonna call at the three black council members. Liddell Lewis, Clinton Martin, and Candace Bussell. This shit is majority black. I don't have to be ashamed to talk black, white, red, two, four. Democratic, Republican, I'm not gonna back my tongue. When you can try to shut me down and remove me from exercising my freedom of speech, but we're a smart community, smarter than what you know. When I walked into Christ fellowship a week or so ago and seen the community leaders, many of them read a statue of Dawes, the NAACP, Black Lives Matter, CBAC, Democracy Defense League. I seen us, and we are the ones who speak in this city. When the vote was taken, even though the issue of this wrongful removal was a center attraction, I agree with the masses of the majority that forty billion get to be talked about. Forty billion dollars to a general fund allocated, and how am I gonna watch it and make sure that every dime is spent for vote 2026? I don't even see the logistics of it. But regardless of that, why put it in a category of money when people have spit on you for over a year? Give us five million, ten million, fifteen million, fix our roofs, our houses, generation of wealth, and they're the ones who vote for you, and you turn your back? Bussell, you were there with Liddell Lewis, with that Clinton, that Bussell. Y'all gonna be in a surprise. The Lord is good, 'cause guess what? One of them is conscious, Worthing. If we write six hundred signatures on you, Liddell, y'all messed with some of the wrong folks. I ain't no way to say it. God bless the residents of the City of Flint, and we need to fix this town.
Wait one second, and before you speak, would you all please refrain from yelling out? Thank you.
You people don't be talking back when the-
I am.
Yes?
Don't go on.
Sherry Allen. That's the way I am. You see me now? I am the one that's gonna be called over, but you got to give mine to you. You took our city and you told them that. We believe in you being like us, but you're not like us. You turned your coat and turned your tail up and ran these dogs off of other people. We dependent on you. Now, you still have a chance to redeem yourself. I'm gonna deny it. You can still ask me, this is your budget, to return that forty million back to the people. You got to write you that, 'cause you hold it first straight, but these are the fault. All the others also give a bomb like you normally do and say, "Baby, look, let's give some of the money back to the people." You got the clock, Miss City, that's unfortunate. You're disgracing. And I can't wait to get your butt out here.
What I'm talking about, that's unfair treatment. Now, you don't wanna talk about black and white. We wanna talk about fairness. You gave the black person a warning, but you didn't give the white person a warning.
What?
You did not. You did not. And so, I don't know if you afraid to- You gonna bring the entire chamber into order. Bring the entire chamber into order. He yelled out, he didn't have the floor. He didn't have the tone.
Point of order.
You are showing-
Excuse me, one second. Um, to Sherry, I think, where's your point of order? Are we in discussion?
Oh, my God!
Mad Chair, I'll ask you really-
We are working, we need something to stop.
You made a warning her, and you warned her, but she wasn't in here.
Yeah, she's in the court.
This is a little way to use me, and that's not a discussion.
Mad Chair, I'm requesting that she stop discussing.
Give the ninth ward person a warning. Ms. Warren, 'cause she's illegally taking the floor.
We are in discussion, but she feels something.
See, if you come here, you know what's going on.
Please, you guys.
I'm finished. I'll let you know that I'm finished.
Absolutely. I wanna remind-
Like I said, you should be done.
I wanna remind Miss Winfrey Carter to respect the chair.
And the chair, and the chair should respect the limits.
I didn't respect the limits.
Don't remind. Don't remind.
I'm not going to record the chair.
I still had time. I was still talking.
Again, the reminder is that you need to respect the chair.
I said, I thought- And when I'm finished, when I'm finished, I'll let you know I'm finished.
Again, when we pause, I-
Oh, it can be my time, baby.
Oh, that's not how this works. One second. And I thought you were finished, is why I stopped you. I didn't know you had time.
You had no right to interfere and interrupt.
That's fine.
My time.
I wasn't trying to interrupt your time, John. I wasn't trying to-
I still had time.
Okay, that's fine, and you'll get it back. What I'm saying to you, though, is the tone and everything that you accuse everybody else of the time you speak, don't speak to me like that.
And you don't speak to me like that.
I wasn't speaking to you any kind of way. I actually was moving on.
I know what this rule just made, you know?
You do not. She, the chair, give that back.
What, you're a guardian because you're the chair?
No.
You gotta get it, right? I don't know who you think you are this morning.
You can have a pill in the middle of the table.
I have a pill. We're rolling out the chair.
You may have given her about thirty-three seconds.
They sit up here like this. High and mighty. For your life, now something coming into the third ward that you represent, and you will lose everything to stick with what Liddell then was doing, and you know it's wrong. I don't, you know, like Liddell saying, "If you know better, you do better." But you guys know better, and you don't do better. It's bad. This, you know, it's happy to know that the seventh ward gonna be put to the side, and the ninth ward don't look, she's saying she ain't coming back, but I don't believe it. It's her name. When May come, I bet her name be on that ballot. How much you guys want that? So y'all better get ready, 'cause she's not going anywhere, 'cause she think there ain't nobody gonna take that seat. We got a lot of folks to clear that seat right there. And we don't have to hear these racial comments about how we act in here. But we act truthfully, like you do, like you tried to say Martin Luther King. You don't even know nothing about Martin Luther King. If you go to sleep tonight, you won't know about Martin Luther, other king. Have a good day.
All right, May, call the speaker, please.
The comments you made. I, since you were trying to, ever since that she made the first accusations about me allegedly messing with, um, young men, I, I tried to just ignore that because, and I think about hurting people, hurting people, hurting people. And every time I watched her come to this podium, she has came up here and said derogatory comments towards individuals. Not talking about policy, not talking about procedures, but made derogatory comments towards people. I watched when we was on the elevator, she called you out your name when we was at the county building, and she called you out your name. That's why I really lost respect. Now she talking about my upbringing, where my mother worked at Hurley Hospital and worked her butt off to make sure we could pack clothes, lights, food. We never went without. Now she getting up here talking about me growing up poor, when not one time us growing up, even if she lived in the neighborhood where I grew up at, I never knew she lived over there. So, for her to get up and now you wanna talk about my upbringing and me being poor, something must be really going on that you feel like every time you hit that podium, you gotta attack somebody up here, and not the policy and the procedures they making, but personally attack them. You talking about more to my job to do whatever you wanna do. You can do what you wanna do, 'cause you're a brown person. I was at my job today, and I miss work. I can't wait to go back to work, but I'm gonna go back to work when it's that right time. I'm not gonna go back to work, 'cause you think I need to go back to work, 'cause I'm sitting here as city council. I'm gonna continue to do what I'm doing. But every time you hit that podium, you always trying to attack me. And you, you, you older than me.
Anyone else like to speak at council's forum?
Well, you ain't gonna do that.
Excuse that, excuse me. Excuse me. Please hold. Mr. Murphy, please hold. Sir, sir, you're out of order. Sir, sir, you're out of order, okay? So let's move on. All right. Anyone else like to speak? Ms. Murphy?
Thank you. I'm gonna thank everyone who was still here through this, through this time. And we have nine to go, and I'm gonna keep this very short. Um, Mr. Matthews, I do wanna touch on the employee's pension, because that has been a concern, because Clint was funded at twenty-six percent, and it, we were supposed to get two-hundred-and-twenty million. Two infusions, one of one-seventy, the other one of fifty million.
What could be a promising neighborhood development? That's it? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next public speaker. Next public speaker. Um, I was asked by a resident to read a letter into the record who was not able to be here today on behalf of a public speaker.
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if we wanna do that. We could be in you and dated with letters. I just ain't seen that before.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this letter into the record. It'll, it'll be within that same two minutes.
I would object to that.
Okay, I'm still gonna read this into the-
I would object to that, so when there's an objection, we can vote on it. But I would object to that.
Madam Clerk. Ms. Brown. Can I read it into the record? I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and read this, this letter.
I appeal the ruling at a chair.
There is an-
Or make, or make a motion that we vote on it. I don't want that to become a practice. This ain't the first time. So I move that we vote on that.
So do you want to drop the appeal in place of the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I objected. You should've called for a vote.
Okay, so what's your motion, Mr. Mays?
That we vote on that, whether we gonna take written statements and start reading them into the records, 'cause people can't be here for public comment.
Okay.
That's what I'm, we gonna vote on.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to be able to read a letter from residents into the record for those public speakers who cannot be here today. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I second it.
It's been moved and properly supported. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
I, I would, I second it. It's only so we can have discussion and move forward with this, but, um, the state attorney general just ruled that we have to make provisions for, and maybe Attorney Kim can speak to this, make provisions for people that can't attend for ADA. Are you familiar with that, Mr. Kim? If so, can you please enlighten us on that?
Uh, yes. Yes, I am somewhat familiar with that opinion and how it would apply here. Whether that applies in this circumstance here, frankly, I don't know enough about the proposed speaker to give you an opinion.
Point of information.
What's your point?
Oh, I, um, well, I guess it's really not, but if you'll accept-
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I just wanted to clarify, because I've read it, and it's for members of council that can no longer be, well, that's how I read it, I thought. Well, that's, that was what my point of information was.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays.
Yeah, I don't know if this person fits what you're talking about, Mr. Pfeiffer. I'm familiar with the opinion that came down as it relates to disabilities and making provisions. I'm not hearing, um, Vice President say anything of that nature. And so we'll wait to see if we hear anything of that nature. But when we were on electronic meetings, we had written comments come in. For thirty years, I've not seen this. And this is not the first time, I think, this request has been made. That could be problematic if we open that door and start doing that, because we could be sitting here for hours, because we must treat everybody the same with written communications. I'm not gonna open that door. I'm gonna vote no. Um, if the chairperson wanna wait till we get to discussion items or something that we have control over and read it into the record, that'll be fine. But I'm not gonna open the door for written comments to come in, 'cause people can't make it. That could be problematic. We have an agenda. We have council comments, discussions, where council people can use them to accommodate people if they will. And so I'm gonna vote no for those reasons, because it could turn into something that could be problematic. And we have opportunities, council people, to accommodate our residents and anybody else who wanna do that. This is a public comment period, and it's just not normal what I'm hearing. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion?
Madam Chair.
Uh, Ms. Priestley.
Yes, I, um, President Mays said what I was going to say. If you wanna read it into the record, I think you should do that during discussion, because it does open the door. One of the reasons why we, I personally voted to meet in person was to stop all of the outside comments coming into council and council being late for phone in from long distance and the mail in. So I would suggest, and I would, that those kinds of comments are read during our discussion time.
Is there any more discussion?
Madam Chair.
Uh, Ms. Worthing.
Um, we've done this before. It's not unprecedented. I agree that I don't wanna hear a million emails saying the same thing every single time, but this has been done before. However, if it gets voted down, or I'm not actually sure how I'm supposed to vote on this, can we clarify a yes or no vote? Is, will a yes vote mean that you can read the message?
The motion on the floor is to be able to read letters into the record for those who are unable to attend.
Okay.
Point of information, point of order. I didn't make a motion that you should read it. Uh, my motion was that it shouldn't be read. That's my position. You alleging that I made a motion to read it? That wouldn't be accurate.
The motion that I had, and I believe I restated it correctly, was to be able to read the letters into the record for those who are unable to attend.
I made a motion. Mr. Pfeiffer seconded. I can assure you, I didn't make a motion to read it.
With all due respect, Mr. Mays, in regards to your comments, you did say that you would be voting no, which would imply that you did not want letters to be read into the record.
That's correct. Through you to the secretary staff. Do you know what my motion was? Okay. So we're clarifying that yes says read it and no says not to read it.
Correct. Thank you. So I'll be voting yes, because I don't think this happens very often that when we're in person, that someone asks for an email to be read. But if, if it gets voted down, I would use your time for, uh, council discussion after public speaking to read that in. That's my only suggestion, but this is not unprecedented. It's happened before. As long as, as it's occasional, I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Since I've been coming to city council meeting, I have not known of letters being read during public comment period. I'll be interested in reading a letter through email, or if you wanna make a copy, you can give me a copy of the, um, statement that whoever wanna read. But once you open the door to me for, um, public to start sending them written statements, it's not fair to do it for one and don't do it for the other. And like my colleague said, once you open the door to start this, reading public comments like that, then you should be fair and allow others. And if we're not gonna allow others, we shouldn't allow one. So I'll be voting no to, um, have that letter read. But if we wanna change that in the rules moving forward, we can talk about that and discuss that, but I just don't think today I can support reading it publicly.
Is there any more discussion?
Um, yes, Madam Chair.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
I agree with my colleagues. I think, um, to read that letter tonight, that would be opening the doors to get a flood of, of letters, that I, I feel that if the residents want something, um, read or want something for council to, um, to be known of, they would send an email. We all have email addresses. Your email, the email addresses would be your, the first, um, initial of the first name and that last name at cityofflint.com, and that they can also send it to all of the council members. And, and that would be suffice, I think. So I'll be voting no, um, to have that letter read.
Is there any more discussion? Is there any more discussion in this first round? Is there any more discussion? Moving on to the second round, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays.
Yeah, you welcome to use your privileged time to read it, but this is not the proper way to do it. So, you know, if you have that earning to read it, if it come to you and they want it read, you can do that on the record, but not in this form, the way that you're doing it. And so I hope you understand that. That's my position. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Is there any more discussion? Final call. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, that moves us to the vote. The motion on the floor is to read letters into the record for those who are unable to attend. For clarity purposes, a yes vote means yes, we can read the letters. A no vote means no, we cannot. Um, Madam, or Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns? Ms. Herkenrother?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
No.
The vote is two yes, six no.
The vote is two yes, six no. The motion passes. Final call for public speakers.
Point of order.
What's your point?
The motion to read it fails.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You are correct. It fails. Two yes, six no. The motion fails. Final call for public speakers.
Anybody else want the floor? Mr. Murphy, you got the floor, and I'm watching the clock on you. Proceed.
You can watch the clock all you want.
Nah, I ain't gonna.
All I'm saying is-
I'm not only gonna watch it, I'm gonna listen. Set that clock.
All I'm saying is, we, we already kinda know what we wanna do. All I'm asking for my colleagues to do is let's go on and vote this up or vote this down so we can move on and move forward. These people ready to see whether they gonna get some money or not. It look like, um, they got the votes here. Me calling point of order and you not liking me calling point of order, that's on you. All I'm saying is, I'm trying to stick to the agenda. The agenda is, we got some motions on the floor right now to either vote these people, to get them their money, and all I'm asking, instead of us just going, going on and on and on and on and on all night, some of us don't wanna be in here all night. I want to do the business of the City of Flint, and we got some motions on the floor about paying them their money, and I wanna get it paid, and I don't think it take all of that to put a motion on the floor and vote it up or down. Resident, I like it or not, I don't care. All I'm saying is, let's vote and get this over with.
Point of information, Mr. Murphy. Do you think that was a waste of your time? Anybody else want the floor? I'm gonna get it. See, I got elected.
Mr. President?
Who said that? Go ahead. Don't worry about what he say we should do. Use your time.
And I most certainly will.
Thank you so much. Anybody else wanna use their time that Mr. Murphy don't seem to want folk to use? Anybody else? Then I'm gonna use my other five minutes that he seem to don't want me to use. Mr. Murphy, you done distracted me.
Point of order.
What's your point?
I did not, you, you missed, you misinterpreting what I'm saying. Your five minute was up, and it was time for you to wrap up. You do get five more minutes. So- Point of order.
That ain't a point of order. What's your point?
That is not a point of order.
Right. It's just some rhetoric where you using up time and you said you wanted people to be quiet and vote. That ain't a point of order. That's a speech you wanna get of me, and I'm too old for that. See, you distracted me. I got elected and get elected to be the voice for folk, and you not gonna take it away just 'cause you wanna hurry up and vote. I ain't studying that. So Mr. Murphy, he can whine and talk about what they gave me? No, I got a right. I was elected. You gave me that. I know they gave him some illegal literature that helped put him in office. I know that.
Point, um, point of order.
What's your point, Mr. Murphy?
We on the appeal for, um, the decision that the chairperson made. My colleague is talking about literature that has nothing to do, is not germane into the appeal. He need to stay on topic.
Your point is well taken. Please stay on topic, Mr. Mays.
His point can be well taken, but what he talking about, you gave me, and I was elected, and I got a right to speak. It's on topic, because somebody gave him some illegal literature.
Point, point of order.
Mr. Mays.
What? Mr. Mays, yes, what's your point?
My point of order is, my colleague in the first ward is making accusations that he is not, can't, and have not proven in the court of law that it's true.
I've watched it. I beg people to act civilized and quit talking about folks. I remember it started, "Honest Man Mays, you're the most racist person I ever met in my life. Look at the video. I spit cashews out, tripped me out. I said, I don't know if you racist, but you still is Eric Mays." This, I don't care who vote yes or no. You gonna see me make motions? I'm gonna vote yes for fire, police, election workers, and everything on my priority. And I don't care if the vote is one or three to six. For those of my colleagues who don't understand, don't wanna do the work, we in a working session now. All this should've been over with, but then nobody do it. I try to speak, I get shut down and put out of meetings by police. I'm suing right now. Suing right now.
That's why we in this appeal process now, because you spend too much time worrying about what Councilman Murphy-
Point of order.
What's on agenda, and if you focus-
Point of order.
What's your point?
What you just said? Did you just cuss?
I'm sorry, I did not.
Did you say the F-word? I cuss better than you. Ms. Priestley, you didn't hear it, you didn't have to hear it, just see Jeffrey Thomas eating other people, but he did it. Now, he done got out of hand.
This is, this is insane. We all know that Mr. Mays, uh, hasn't paid his house taxes, hasn't paid his water bill. Now he's gonna have-
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Now, Mr. Chair, you gonna have to rule in these meetings now. Now we going on the win. If she don't have nothing to say, she should stop talking.
Ms. Galloway, there is no point of order about somebody else at the floor.
Oh, you just, okay. I didn't hear Ms. Galloway call point of order when he caught, when Mr. Mays called me a gangster.
Mr. President, Mr. Kincaid say he can talk about certain aspects of the confidential memo and mediation. I respectfully disagree, and this, and, and so I don't, that's why I- I respectfully disagree, and this, and, and so I don't, that's why I told Mr. Kincaid in this council, we need an executive session. Mr. Kincaid is running for mayor, and he politic and confidential memo.
Point of order, point of order.
I got a problem with it. So it's confidential, but now he delving off into it. That's a problem. It should be a problem with the court. Now, are you a problem playing politics with this wall?
Mr. Mays?
It's a problem.
Mr. Mays?
Point of information is what I ask. Now I want him to respond. Can he talk about the confidentiality of it in this forum? Now I'm gonna run my mouth and watch you play politics.
Point of information.
Let's see what happen.
That's the last time, Mr. Mays.
Well, let him go and contempt the court.
Okay, well, let, if that's-
I want the memo, I want this sent to the federal court. I think that Ms. Worthing is an Eric Mases, and you too, how you think it's funny, Ms. Lewis? So I try to stay away from calling people racist. Do you know Ms. Herkenrother's recorded? When I said black and white the other week, she said, tried to characterize like I called her racist.
Point of information.
What's your point?
I do not know what no Eric Masons, what is an Eric Masons?
Um, Ms. Herkenrother, it's, it's a polite way of calling bright folks who call you a racist, something more polite than what they call you.
I withdraw my motion.
You're ruling.
So, Councilman Mays?
May I proceed?
Please do. Five minutes, Davina.
This ain't no five minutes. We ain't on no debate.
It is.
We ain't on no debate. We ain't on no discussion.
You, um, are-
Yeah, I'm gonna do them individually. What you keep interrupting me for? There ain't no five-minute rule on what I'm doing right now. Don't run no front on me.
You can't, you can't, you can't change something that's already-
I appeal the ruling of the chair. Ain't no five-minute rule before it's a motion. I can. You say I-
How about this?
Point of order. Point of order.
How about this?
Point of order.
How about this?
Point of order.
That's right. Politically, I'm leaving. How about that?
That's your choice in the budget process. I'm kind of glad. I'm kind of glad.
That's right, and I'm willing to take whatever the people say.
So, as the senior, as the senior finance person, I could keep it going. I could keep it going, but I'm gonna say that this meeting is adjourned for lack of a quorum. That's the official announcement. This meeting has been adjourned for lack of a quorum. When it comes to proposals on police- Gary, you are, you, you are dead wrong. You didn't reason anybody else to try to make somebody vote on the vote.
I voted out.
You voted, you voted to separate, but you came back and voted for him and didn't have to.
Because I believe, I actually liked those ones. I did vote separate, so you had it up to you.
Yeah, but we, we, you voted for a five-hundred-dollar award account. You voted for a thirty-thousand-dollar this and that. And we don't have to, you can't force me to vote on them as a group. And I watch how much we talk about that in your political career. Just watch how much we talk about it.